Call to order this regular meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission, and I will begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cellphones have been silenced. Please note that tonight's planning commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the www minnehaha county dot org site for viewing by the general public. Any final action taking on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the planning commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Monday, October 31st at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission for a hearing on Tuesday, November 15th at or after 9:00 AM. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date, and meetings of the county commission are held in this same room. First on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? At this time, the planning commission will consider the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial and meet all of the requirements of the codes and regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on in one motion with no public hearing on the items unless a member of the public, the commission, or staff requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. The minutes from the September 26th, 2022, meeting are included in the consent agenda. Next, I'll read each item on the consent agenda and ask if there are any issues or comments from the planning commission or the audience. If any member of the planning commission or the audience would like to be heard on an item, please raise your hand, and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Any items remaining on the consent agenda will be approved by the planning commission with the conditions recommended by staff. Item number one is the approval of the minutes of the September 26th, 2022, meeting. Item number two is conditional use permit 22-73 to transfer to building eligibilities from the northwest quarter, the southeast quarter, and the southwest quarter, the northeast quarter, to the northeast quarter, the southeast quarter, and the southeast quarter, the northeast quarter, in the south half, the northeast quarter, and the north half, the southeast quarter. There is an exception of H-1, and an exception of the south, 150 feet, east, 300 feet, southeast quarter, northeast quarter, and except the north, 150 feet, the east, 300 feet, the northeast quarter, southeast quarter, and except, so the south, 200 feet, the east, 659 feet. That is the end of the exception, all in section 27. Township 103 North, range 48 West, that is in Edison Township. The petitioner is Trent Dolly, that's also the landowner. This is located approximately three miles west of Garrettson. Does anyone from the audience or planning commission wish to be heard on this item? Sir?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll end up moving number two to the regular agenda. Item number three is conditional use permit 22-74 to exceed 1,600 square feet of accessory building space requesting 2,010 square feet on the property legally described as lot four Langdon subdivision, and there is an exception of H-1, end of exception, section 34 Township 103 North, range 49 West. That is a severe drop township. The petitioner is Dennis Holtz, he's also the landowner. Location, 25564 475th Avenue. Does anyone from the audience or the planning commission wish to be heard on this item?
Item one that's petitioned, you don't need to hear that permit?
No, sir. Okay, we'll move on to item number four. It's conditional use permit 22-75 to allow a motor vehicle repair shop on the property legally described as lot one, block one Brower's second addition, the southwest quarter, section 27 Township 102 North, range 51 West. That is in Hartford Township. Petitioner is Thomas Asshoff, also the landowner, located at 46334 Jeffrey Street. Does anyone from the audience or planning commission wish to be heard on this item?
The staff would like to remove this to the regular agenda.
Okay, so item number four will be moved to the regular agenda. Item number five, conditional use permit 22-76 to transfer one billing eligibility from the northeast quarter, the southwest quarter, to the southeast quarter, the southwest quarter, in the east half, southwest quarter. There is an exception of track one McColl's addition, that's the end of the exception, all in section 12 Township 101 North, range 51 West, that is in Wall Lake Township. Petitioner is Matthew Schumacher, he's also the landowner. It's located approximately four miles west of Sioux Falls along 264th Street. Does anyone from the audience or the planning commission wish to be heard on this item? Okay, item number six is conditional use permit 22-77 to allow a manufactured home on the property legally described as the north, 1,320 feet, the east, 1,221.25 feet, the northwest quarter, section 19 Township 103 North, range 51 West. That is in Grand Meadow Township. Petitioner is Ronald Nedvid, he's also the landowner, located 46031 253rd Street. Does anyone from the audience of the planning commission wish to be heard on this item? Item number seven is conditional use permit 22-78 to transfer one billing eligibility from track one Chris subdivision to track two Chris subdivision, all in the southwest quarter, section 27 Township 101 North, range 52 West. That is in Wellington Township. Petitioner is Forrest Miller, landowner ZNS LLP. It is located at the intersection of 457th Avenue and 267th Street. Is there anyone from the audience or the planning commission wish to be heard on this Okay, so item number four wishes to be removed to the regular agenda?
Item number two.
And item, sorry, item number two as well.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion second to approve the consent agenda except for item number two and item number four. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. If your item has been approved, you are free to go. We will return to item number two. Kevin?
Good evening, I am Kevin Hookman from the county planning department. Conditional use permit, our item number two is conditional use permit number 2273 to transfer two billing eligibilities. The locations of the properties and the building eligibilities are shown on this here map. The petitioner is requesting to transfer the two eligibilities from the interior part of the quarter of the land to the quarter-quarter sections along the South Dakota Highway 11. At the time, the petitioner is planning on selling the eligibility on the southeast of this property here, and the one in the northeast is going to be used at a later date. He has no plans for it at this time. Transfers of billing eligibilities are fairly common throughout the county, and some of the concerns that might come up for the transfer would be, is the transfer going to be closer to any CAFOs or existing feed operations, or anything that where driveways would be a hindrance to traffic elsewhere. I would note that because this property is along the highway, once the transfer is completed, the petitioner will have to work with the DOT to get driveway access onto the state highway and for approval for all that. Staff did review the criteria of this permit application, and we recommend approval of the conditional use permit with two conditions. Their right to farm notice covenant be placed in the deed prior to the issuance of a building permit for the single-family dwellings, and then two, approval from the South Dakota Department of Transportation must be obtained for the location of any new driveways onto South Dakota Highway 11 before the building permit is being issued. And just a couple of the aerial photography, you can see that there's a creek that runs through it, kind of divides the property up, and there's an existing farmstead where that that one eligibility is going to be moved down by that farmstead. And then this is looking from the north of the curve, and then from the east. So I'll probably bring it back up to that first map, and I'll stop my presentation there, and I'll be ready for any questions.
Any questions for him? Sir, you'll have to wait your turn, okay? I guess not at this time. Is a petitioner here? Will you please step forward, state your name and address, sir?
It's all going to be on TV.
Great.
You state your name and address, sir.
Trent Dolly, 25458 41st Avenue, Garrettson.
Any questions for him?
Madam Chair?
Jeff?
How close to Highway 11 do you plan to actually build anything?
Well, a north one, I'm not doing anything, but what I'm selling to the south, that's up to him.
Okay, gotcha. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, sir. You may be asked to come back, we'll see what happens. Any oppositions? It's your turn. State your name and address.
Good evening, my name's Brad Helverson. I live at 25426482nd Avenue. I live directly across from where they're moving the eligibilities. I guess my biggest concern is when they changed that Highway 11 and they put the curve in there, they moved one of the eligibilities right next to them.
Can you indicate using the mouse, or?
I wonder.
He's moving it.
Okay. This, sorry. All right. Our driveway lies right on this curb here and goes back to this acreage back here. When they moved this road over, there was a homestead right here, and we shared two separate driveways. When that curb was was put in, they ended up combining our driveway with their driveway, and they ended up moving him down. Harry Lawrie was his name, they moved him down here. Well, since then, we have purchased this property, and my daughter lives there, and she has three little kids. The traffic on Highway 11 here has gotten rather heavy, and our biggest concern was as far as the eligibilities and him moving it and building here is, I don't know who's going to live there, what they're going to do, but the amount of traffic and the buses stopping, I mean, there's many times we have had close incidences right on this driveway because it is close to being on the curb. So I guess that's just one of our concerns is where is the access point going to be to this driveway? The other one is right by the substation here, and that's directly across from this from this here one. And then the other access point that goes into our field, I think, I'm not sure if there was an access point here or not. But our biggest concern is just the safety of the kids if they have, where are they going to have the access, where they're going to entrance into the highway? And so, and just looking at this, he does have this quarter and this quarter, and these eligibilities can possibly be moved to 255 or 41st. So, but our biggest concern is the safety. There getting to be a lot of people, this, I know he has his house for sale, I think it is right here. There's also an eligibility, I don't know if it goes with that, but, so, that's the extent of, I guess, what I wanted to say. I don't have a problem with the eligibilities being moved, it's just that where they're going and the access to this Highway 11, so.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for him? We'll have the petitioner come forward again, and maybe he can answer that, okay, sir?
I only moved that because the guy at the planning is only said, hey, since you're moving one, move the other, so I don't have to. I'm not going to do that. I'll probably never build anything there, so it doesn't matter. We can just not do it, it's fine. I just need the one to the south, for sure.
Sir, do you own all the land inside that red boundary?
Yeah.
So they're still within that section, or whatever?
He just thought to do it since I'm doing the other, I was never planning on doing anything with it, so we can just forget about it.
Madam Chairman?
Go ahead.
I guess I just would refer you back to the conditions of approval, and the state of South Dakota is going to have to, DOT is going to have to approve the location of those approaches, and they have very strict criteria on site distances, and so I think that they take precautions to make sure that the, that any approach would be safe, based on the speed of the highway, the site distances, the curves, I mean, they take that all into consideration. So there is a condition in there that addresses, you know, the requirement that DOT would approve any approach permit.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Scott and staff, just a question about that ice hockey rink that we were proposed a while back. That would have been to the east of Highway 11. Was it fairly near this curve, though?
I think it was further south.
Okay, thanks.
It was quite a, I think it was several miles, probably three, five, four or five miles further south.
There's also a curve that launched dump trucks and stuff past their driveway.
And, and I think that when we, when you think back to that hearing, you're talking about a land use that would generate lots of traffic. And this is a single-family residence, and you're talking three to five trips per day for a house typically.
Okay, commissioners?
I guess, Madam Chair, well, I guess I can understand Brad's concern with safety. I guess I do also echo Scott's comment that I don't think it's incumbent upon us to sit here tonight and try and say what site distance is and isn't appropriate. There's people a lot smarter than than me that understand that, and I think, well, I guess their whole job is to ensure public safety, so I don't see any reason that we wouldn't approve these two eligibilities being moved, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion second to approve conditional use permit 22-73. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Okay, when we go on to item number four. Kevin?
Item number four is conditional use permit number 2275 to allow motor vehicle repair shop on the property seen on the screen. Here's the aerial map of the property. This item first came to the attention of planning staff by a complaint, the trucks were being parked on the road and junk items were accumulated in the property. Staff has been in contact with the property owner a couple times, sent letters, and at the second letter, the applicant, or the landowner came and applied for the conditional use permit. The application for the conditional use permit was initially written for motor vehicle repair, but as staff further reviewed this, it should also include outdoor storage on the site, since there's lots of outdoor storage on the property. I will note that this picture doesn't show, and I'll show a few other photos in a moment, that there has been a large warehouse constructed on the property in 2020 for the purpose of storing parts and repair. The building has not yet received a final inspection, but just this morning, the petitioner has come in and renewed the building permit so that that final inspection can be done. The petitioner at the time of the application, petitioner stated the outdoor storage will not be an issue once the building is complete. Motor vehicle repair is generally compatible in an industrial park if certain conditions are met. There is other motor vehicle repair shops in this industrial park in the Brower addition south of Hartford, and allowing another motor vehicle repair would be compatible with neighboring I will kind of jump a little bit here, because since I wrote the staff report, I have been to the property this morning. There has been some cleanup of the property, and I'll kind of bring up some of the photos of this. Here's the site plan of the property. Staff received one complaint letter, I put it in here. But here is some photos of the property, and on the bottom left is the the site visit on October 13th, and then here's the larger photo is the site visit from today. And you'll see that here we have parking on the street, here the semis are not there. There's one, maybe a customer parking on the side of the road here. You'll see here that there was stuff being stored along this area here, including motors, engines, and many of those items have been moved in the newer photo here. Looking at down this way, a couple of trucks that were partially, had parts removed off of them, have been removed, and now there's what appears to be operational trucks in its place. Looking straight down, you'll see, when I visited this property today, the applicant was moving stuff with his loader here, and you can see that much of the the items are being moved back and into the building. And you'll see here, again, those trucks have been removed and replaced by here, and some items been removed out the side. Let me bring it back to the first photo here. So a couple of extra comments. This item, because the outdoor storage and the parking issues, one thing I would like to bring up is that the zoning ordinance does require driveways of industrial and commercial properties that are accessed off of a hard-surfaced road to also have hard surfacing. The area behind the fence, which would be roughly at the start of the building right here, is maneuvering area, and that does not need to be hard-surfaced. Hard surfacing has been an ongoing issue in the Brower addition, in part because the Brower addition has had a couple, or started with gravel roads, and then the second additions had paved roads, and it was developed in kind of a manner that made it difficult to enforce hard surfacing. The property did have a conditional use permit in 2008 for a contractor's storage lot, and hard surfacing was never attained by that petitioner, and it has never been met. On section six of our staff report, required for criteria about the health, safety, and general welfare of the public and the comprehensive plan, I note on here that the planning commission may defer the permit application if all the following standards can be met. One of them, that all on-street parking must be removed. Like I said, the trucks here have been removed, other than perhaps this one, it was maybe a customer, I don't know, that has largely been met, but that would be still considered on-street parking right here. The ordinance requires a 15-feet setback from the front property line for parking. That would be approximately here on the road, so maybe that one vehicle would be adequate for meeting that setback, but not vehicles further closer to the road. All outdoor storage of parts or dismantled trucks must be behind the fence or moved inside the building. The petitioner is working on that, as you saw in those photos, and that the building permit number 2456 must be renewed and all fees paid and final inspection completed. As I stated earlier, the applicant has obtained a continuation of the building permit, and will close that out with the building inspector. So the staff will recommend at this time a deferral of action to allow perhaps a little more time to finish up items on the property and those things that may need a little more work. If we do a one-month deferral, the item would be heard again on November 28th. If there, if you feel there needs to be more time, the next meeting after that would be January 23rd of 2023.
So that would be a two-month deferral, right?
That'd be a three-month. You got a one-month or three-month?
Right, but I won't be here in January.
So, is there any questions?
Let's hear from the applicant.
Yeah. It's the applicant here. Will you please step forward? State your name and address, sir.
Thomas Assup, property address 46334 Jeffrey Street, Hartford, South Dakota. Going over this stuff, I have some updated photos on my phone at, as of 5 o'clock today. We don't really have a zoning issue here. We have a parking issue and an outside storage issue. As per Article 7 I-1 Light Industrial District, Minnehaha County zoning, 7.03, permitted special uses. A building or premises may be used for the following purposes in the I-1 Light Industrial District in conformance with the conditions prescribed herein, or by obtaining a conditional use permit for such use in conformance with the requirements of Article 19. A, communication facilities, warehousing and repair facilities provided there is no outside storage on the premises, no storage of regulated substances, building contains less than 20,000 square feet. We now fit all those categories. We don't store anything that's regulated. Outside storage, that's, like I say, my bad. When I moved into the place, they were storing contract or roll-off dump bodies throughout the property, from the road clear to the back. I mean, it was, and all we've done is maintain the status quo since then. There's been no issues for eight and a half years that we've been at that property. Where'd my sheet go? Trucks that have been parked on the street have been, unit that have been there for repairs and are done, awaiting customer pickup, or have been dropped off outside of regular business hours. All attempts have been made to expedite the removal of the units in the street as it occurs. I mean, if somebody parks in the street, when I get there, I'm typically there by 6:00 in the morning, stuff gets moved. The parking areas, where's the mouse at here? I didn't make it go left and right.
What do you mean?
I want to go to the parking. The trucks that were dismantled and sitting over here were this red and the maroon trucker. I had a customer of mine who died suddenly of cancer three and a half years ago. I've been after his widow to get the stuff out of there, which she has finally done. She removed, well, five units. She removed, well, five units total, which takes care of that. And with the location of the property line here, this is 16 and a half feet between here and here, same on the, let's see, this one here. There is enough room for full truck parking all along the front end here with the 15-foot Everything that is in the parking lot has now been removed, that you see in this picture here. Cylinder head cores have all been sold. This tub of iron has been scrapped. Now, this yellow truck down here in the corner is one of them, and there is a white one directly behind that one, and a red one right there that you can see. So, we've made pretty much every attempt to take care of the issues that were brought to my attention by Kevin. The hard surfacing thing, 80% of the district down there is not hard surface. There's like five units total that meet the hard surfacing requirement. If you look in the Minnehaha County book, Kevin clarified for me today that you do not have to do the chip sealing. So, I don't have a problem putting hard surface all along the front. Wouldn't bother me a bit. But with the way it was written in the Minnehaha County book, it shows four inches of crushed asphalt, seal coated two times, and not cost-effective. Kevin's information today that it just has to be crushed concrete, I don't have a problem
Anyone have any questions for him?
Madam Chair.
Jeff.
The Broward subdivision has really come a long way since I started on the county commission. It used to be not even gravel streets, it was just mud. And I'm really impressed with the steps taken to improve that whole industrial area. I favor us deferring action on this for a month. I'd be happy to go two months. Three? Anyone say three? Anyway, you guys take it from there, but I think, I think this is coming along as well as the rest of the subdivision out there. That industrial park should be a jewel in our county.
Anyone else have any questions for him? Okay, now at this time, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience that cares to speak to this item?
I make a motion to defer for three months.
Okay. I have a motion second to defer item number four for three months. Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Keep up the good work.
Okay, we'll move on to the regular agenda. We have item number eight, which is conditional use permit, 22-59, to allow a major home occupation. That's custom pallets and crates on the property legally described as track one. Roto Edition, southeast corridor, southwest corridor, section 28. Township 101 North, range 51 West. That is a Malick Township. Petitioner is Tanner Hilger, and he's the property owner. 26680 Apple Lane is the location. Kevin?
All right. Here for me once again today. Item number eight, as you said, is a conditional use permit that was deferred from the July 27th Planning Commission hearing. Location is on the end of Apple Lane, at 26680 Apple Lane. At the last meeting, there were recommendations for things that needed to be addressed on the property before the conditional use permit could move forward for approval. Oh, just a reminder, this request is for a major home occupation to allow the custom pallets and crates being constructed on the property, and in the garage as a home occupation. Of those recommendations, I will note that the staff report, again, was written on the 13th. There has been some updates on the property. The petitioner has satisfied meeting that the six unlicensed vehicles have been removed. The motor vehicles and other equipment on the property are there and being, and not abandoned, but are in working order and stored on the property. The camper has been removed, and all building materials for the pallet construction has been moved inside. I'll have some photos for you here. So, again, on the left side of the screen, I have photos from the October 13th, and then on the right side is photos from earlier today. All those vehicles in the line here have updated tags, including the trailer. You see the color change of the trees have changed a lot. Kind of looking down the row again, you can see here there was building materials stacked before, and that has been cleared out. There's where vehicles were stacked before, and now it is kayaks and other personal items. You'll see the backyard here, building materials and any items, which was there was a camper, and that has all been removed as well. Petitioner submitted some more photos as well, from various other angles, and you'll see that the front yard is in compliance as well, as well as the driveway. And I'll probably hold it there. There's a few other pictures, but I'd be reviewing things we just went over. So, I'll bring you to, again, the end of the staff report. The staff report says that if the planning commission considers approval, staff recommends the following conditions to be applied. There are six conditions listed. The first condition, that all home occupation must meet requirements of Section 12.0302, Major Home Occupation A, Class 1, within the 1990 Revised Zoning Ordinance for Minnehaw County. Condition two, all pallet and crate construction must take place within enclosed garage with doors shut. And that was to take help with any sort of noise concerns. Number three, all material storage shall be stored within the enclosed garage. One trailer may be used outside to temporarily store stacked and transport finished pallets and crates. Number four, no audible noise shall be heard off the property from 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM. And that is actually part of the home occupation rules as well. Number five, all animal, excuse me, all waste material must be disposed of in proper landfill. No burning of waste material should be allowed. And number six, the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the facility at any time after proper notice of the odor, to ensure that the property is in full compliance with the conditional use permit conditions of approval and Minnehaw County's zoning ordinance. After the site visit today and working with the petitioner, staff does feel comfortable recommending approval of this item with those conditions. And I think I'll just close out my presentation with that and ask for any questions.
Madam Chair.
Doug?
Kevin, just on the first page here, the six unlicensed, non-operable vehicles, that has been met?
Yes, there are no unlicensed or non-operable vehicles on the property.
Anyone else? It's not at this time. Is the petitioner here? Will you please step forward, sir, and state your name and address?
Hi, my name is Tanner Hilger. Address 26680 Apple Lane.
Anyone have any questions for him?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
So, how do you feel things are going, working with our staff and getting their recommendations, you know, implemented?
I think it's favorable for all people involved. We have no problems achieving the deadlines. We're happy with the goals that we set for ourselves. We accomplished them. Well, Thursday afternoon, we were where we needed to be. So, we have been testing these requirements since the July hearing, and we know that we can comply with them. We had to change a lot of what we were doing and how we were doing it, but we like it better for ourselves and for our neighbors' sakes. And of course, the county required it, so that's very helpful.
Have you been communicating at all with your neighbors and stuff about their concerns? Because a lot of times, communicating with your neighbors is one of the best ways to blunt any concerns coming up at a meeting like this.
Yeah. So, we made one phone call to a neighbor who answered the phone, and it was a bad time. They were just sitting down for dinner. I asked if I could call back at a different time. He said yes. We called back an hour later, like we said we would. There was no answer, so we sent him a text instead to him and his wife. We also reached out to our other neighbor, who, there was no answer on her phone, so we left a text message there, too. Our text message basically said that we apologize for all the things that we have done incorrectly over the years. We're asking for their forgiveness.
Great. I don't have any other question.
Anyone else? Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, could I just read you a snippet of kind of what we're doing on Apple Lane, so whether it's a clear picture of what we're actually doing?
Sure, go ahead.
If that's okay. As Kevin mentioned, we design and build custom pallets and crates. We bring in the materials using our own van and trailer, and I think Doug, maybe you asked that question on the July meeting, but we're using our own vehicles to do that. We cut the parts with a variety of saws and assemble them using pneumatic staplers. And I don't know what's so sad about nailer, but we use pneumatic staplers and nailers. The products get loaded on our trailer, and we deliver them on my way to my full-time job. So, I just stop by different businesses, deliver that stuff, go to my regular job. After work, I pick up any needed materials, and then I return home. Sometimes the boys may have already built during the day, and they loaded the next trailer by the time I get home. If not, we just work on the rest of that as needed, and we do this by working an average of less than two hours per day. There's no need for any business signs on our property. Any deliveries, like UPS-type deliveries on the business, come less than once per month. All other deliveries are personal. Our business generates no visitors or customers on our property. We have some reasons why we do this business. We're providing a good service to the Sioux Falls area businesses. We'd rather earn extra income than to draw aid. We use the extra income to provide for our large family, to improve our property, and of course, do more family fun stuff. Some of the opportunities this business provides our family, our kids are able to earn income without having to drive to a job, and we're grooming them by teaching them life and trade skills, teaching them the business model, and establishing work ethic. We do this from home because it doesn't make sense to rent building space if we work an average of less than two hours per day. And again, our kids don't need to drive to a job. They can finish their homework, and then they have the opportunity to earn an income right from home. We're grateful to have the ordinances brought to our attention, and now that we know what the ordinances are, we have made things right around our property and are now abiding by the ordinances. We're also thankful for the extra time the county allowed us to accomplish this. We owe the improvements, and we have accomplished our favorable to both the county and to our We've already been able to communicate with two of our other neighbors that have no reservations about us conducting business out of our home. That's all I had.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience care to speak to this item? Please step forward and state your name and address.
Cheryl Frome, 26689 Apple Lane.
You should speak up, ma'am. Can you start over? Because I don't know that he can hear you back.
Cheryl Frome, 6689 Apple Lane. I have some thoughts written down. If I could read them, I have pictures. I don't know if, last time you passed them around, I don't know what you want to do with them this time. But, first of all, I thought after the last meeting, if you had no permit or license to run a business, you could not continue with this business before the decision was Nothing has changed. Actually, after our meeting on July 25th, things have gotten worse. Along with the pounding, there's a loud whining noise from a saw or something, I assume. And this goes on into the night. My neighbor to the south, Jason, told me that that noise was more annoying to him than the pounding, and he hears it clearly at his house. And as you can see from the pictures, they think that surrounding the garage with all these cars will muffle the noise, and I assure you, it does not. Along with this, the children start riding the four-wheelers and the go-kart in the afternoon through the evening. I would guess they think that that disguises the noise, or they do it just to irritate us. They don't burn as much as they did, but they keep their trash in a trailer that they dump somewhere every month or so, and they had a rodent problem before, and I don't think that probably helps it. Just two weeks ago, Tanner sent Larry, Don, and myself the same message on our phone. As you can see, he thought the message would wipe out the five-plus years of aggression we've had, we've dealt with, with this business. The very same day, he sent Jason a text saying, "I have a lot of cleaning up to do in a very short time, and you need to help me." As you can see by the message, he acted as if he didn't know about the ordinances, but he's been turned in several times over the years. He was aware of all the junk, the unregistered, unrunning cars, and he even began to build another building on the land with no permit until Larry called him in, and it is still standing there today. I can show you a picture every day, every day, including on the way here tonight. There's lumber in the driveway and around his property. The road is continuing to degrade. I should have taken pictures of potholes. There's a lot of potholes for such a short road, and there's been no effort to fix it. Some of those potholes will rattle your teeth. We've all had our share of flat tires. Just Wednesday morning, on the way to work, I got about two miles away from the driveway, and my tire indicator came on. It always seems to be the same kind of nail. I'm late for work, trying to get into town to fix it is a headache. It's happened to all of us, and I think that's a big coincidence to think it came from anywhere After our last meeting, Tanner would speed up even more going over the speed bump. I put in a speed bump to try and slow him down for safety reasons. I was mowing this summer. I was mowing this summer, and he saw me, and he could have slowed down, but he sped up and came within inches of hitting me. A few weeks ago, an older person from his house was walking down the road with one of his kids. And I thought if any one of them would have gone over that hill like they always do, those people wouldn't have had a chance to escape. I have recent pictures of him working into the night. You can see this one was Wednesday. They're not great pictures, but you can see the garage doors are open. The saw is going. You can hear the pounding. It's even this weekend. And Kevin addressed the cars. There's a racetrack around there now for the go-karts and stuff. Tanner's been turned in a lot for this stuff, and I feel that no matter what your decision is, he's going to continue to do what he does. And he always has. We're just all sick of the noise, the nails, the potholes, and the passive-aggressive behavior on his part. So, it may look good today, but it hasn't. I can literally pull out my phone and give you a picture every single day of the lumber in the driveway and other issues. So, that's all I have. I think there's a couple other people that want to speak unless you have questions.
Okay, thank you. Just a minute. Ma'am, will you come back? Doug?
Hip's location on that road. Is that at Dead End?
Yes.
So, everybody's using that road. So, he's not to be blamed for everything. He's not to be blamed...
He is not to be blamed for all of the problems with the road, the ruts and all of that. Let's get that straight, because everybody uses that road, correct?
Yes, but nobody else has heavy vehicles like that that he hauls, or nails, I would think.
What's considered a heavy vehicle?
The big trailer full of lumber that he hauls back and forth a couple times a day.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else care to speak to this item? Please step forward, state your name and address.
Larry Johnson, 266-84, Apple Lane. And I'm going to refer to county ordinance MC 3304. And that's public nuisance ordinance. And it basically refers to that the products on a business like that shall not be displayed in any manner when viewed from the outside of the dwelling. And let's see here. Basically, the noise ordinance, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And I've also had pictures, too, of the pallets and stuff. How do you do that? Now, there have been instances where they... A couple of times where they were out there, 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, building pallets. And the noise would get pretty bad sometimes. They would purposely slam the pallets down on the trailer just to make a noise. And there's been a lot of times when we were in the house clear on the other end, and we could hear the pounding and sawing going on. And these were taken over the period from the last commission meeting. Now, you see, there are a lot of them are stacked right in the driveway and not on a trailer. And these are all dated as when they were taken.
I don't see a date on it.
No, they're on the back. I guess my main concern on the whole thing is that even though it's been cleaned up now, I got a feeling that it will go back to what it was as soon as he's got the conditional use permit. That's basically what I've got. And you see, the garage doors are open a lot of the times when they're doing the work, so... And I have seen on a couple of occasions where somebody did bring a trailer in, and they loaded the pallet up, and they came back and got the finished product, so... I guess that's all I got.
Anybody else care to speak to this item? Please state your name and address.
Yes, Madam Chair. My name's Jason Crowsey. My address is 26695, Apple Lane. I think what you have before you is a problem amongst neighbors that has gotten to the point that y'all's involvement became impossible to avoid some time ago. I live at the end of the lane, so I'm one of the first houses, right? And to your point, I drive to my house. Very obviously on that road, I drive down to Cheryl's to say hi. Everyone drives on the road. I only know what impacts me at my house, so I have to defer to my neighbors what's impacted them for years, right? And I don't want to minimize what Tanner and his family are doing and have done for the community, local businesses, and certainly for their family. My concern always comes when you guys get too involved in my neighborhood, because, you know, I don't want to have to deal with you that often, right? With all due respect, it's a matter of as soon as the county's coming in, what's next? In this vein, right, and in my professional endeavors, I've always found that people who are able to communicate with one another work things out a lot faster than those people that aren't. If I hear, and I've talked to Cheryl extensively, I've known Tanner and his family for years, and it seems like the biggest problem that they've had in the past is mutual respect and communication. And if I hear them tonight accurately, and I think I do, I guess they want to know that there's checks and balances that come with this. And I know that there are conditions that have been placed on the recommendation for approval. And I think if you could give them the two-minute overview of what happens, you know, in my mind, when you approve this, right? I think you're going to. I think that there's tons of precedent in South Dakota that says that you should. I think that there's always an economic argument to be made, and in this case, if the production activities can be contained like everyone contemplates, then maybe there's not an issue, right? But if you can address what happens when there is an issue, I think that would go a long way towards satiating my neighbors, all of whom I respect. Does that make sense? Is there a place in that for this meeting, or is that another time that has to happen? Because what I don't want is everyone to go home and be upset with one another. That's not why I open my mouth, right? Also, that yellow odor is my fault. I have to get it... I have to fix two things on it, so it will get out of Tanner's driveway area. And out of all the pictures, I feel bad that it's still there, but I've been laid up for a while. Anyhow, is there a way that we can have an overview on what happens if someone has an issue? If the conditional use permit, as approved, with its conditions, isn't followed or isn't adhered to? I'm not saying that you will. I just... It'd be handy for everyone to understand. Not everyone's dealt with the planning and zoning commission before. Not everyone's had clients that have gotten in trouble before. I have, and I can tell everyone I think will happen, but I'd much rather you guys do that. That's why you're elected, not me. Is that a fair request, or no?
Kevin, can you address that?
Thank you. I'm sorry for talking too long.
No problem.
Yeah, so if this item gets approved tonight, I think that you have a couple of options. If you approve it with the conditions as listed, and the conditions are broken, or if the doors are open, say, after hours, then we can do a recall and review process where we bring the item back here in front of you for another hearing and see if there's anything we can do to resolve it or to recall the permit and close it down that way. The other option would be is we have had permits where there'd be contention like this, where we set up an automatic... Okay, in one year or in two years, we will be recalling this, and you give a month and the year of when you would like to hear this item again, so that we have a review of how has it been going over this time period. So, that would be another option if that was... Approval was what your plan would be.
Commissioners, any comments?
Madam Chair.
Yeah?
Yeah, these neighborhood things are very difficult. And, you know, I remember we had a dog kennel. They were worried about the barking. At the same time, the people, ex-people that moved in might have had four kids with Ninja motorcycles that were racing up and down, but they were worried about barking dogs a quarter mile away. And you just... You don't know what it might be. But right now, we're on odds with each other. We're not getting along, and every little thing is another straw on the camel's back. And somehow, we have to break that cycle of letting everything get to us. And I'm wondering, from the point of view of the neighbors, what would you like to have happen that would make this easier to get along with? What could be done that would make you happy and still allow these folks to have their business? Is there anything?
Will you please step forward, ma'am, to the microphone?
We've got to get it all on TV, you know?
When we ask anything, because we started a long time ago trying to talk to him, and it gets... It gets worse over time. The speed bump, for example, it's ridiculous to have to put a speed bump up. But we talked to him, he ignored us. We sent him a group letter from the neighborhood, and he laughed at us. And then we finally put in the speed bump, and he drives faster than ever. All of them do. They just fly at 5:00 o'clock in the morning, the van goes through with no muffler and the trailer, and it's boom, boom! And I can hear it with my windows shut. So, I don't... I don't know. As you can see, the garage doors are open even as recently as Wednesday. There's always lumber over there. If there's not pounding and there is, you can hear that whining of that saw or whatever that is going on over there. And the other day, I went back to check my property. I found more trash. It's so frustrating, and nothing happens. We've tried the talking. We've tried the neighborhood getting together, but it just gets worse.
So, you can't think of anything that would maybe help beyond their cooperation?
I don't know. We... I know Larry's called Kevin a lot, and Kevin just says, "Take pictures, take pictures," but nothing changes. So, I don't know. Of course, he's going to tell you what you want to hear now, but it's a different story at home. So, and I'll tell you what, it's pretty frustrating and dangerous to be stuck with flat tires out on a country road at 7:00 in the morning in the dark, you know? Which has happened a lot to all of us. So, I don't know what else to tell you.
Thank you.
I have a question for Stan.
Sure. Kevin, could you come forward, please?
Kevin, reference was made to an unfinished building that's standing on the property. Were you observant or of an... Or did you observe an unfinished building?
I guess I don't recall a unfinished building. I would assume that they must be referring to the horse building, because I know that he has done construction on the house, and he has received building permits and inspections for the house as required.
Any other questions, maybe, for Kevin?
Madam Chair.
Doug?
How bad is the road?
Madam Chair, Tony's saying he doesn't...
I don't think he can hear you, Doug. We repeat that question.
Sorry, I know you can chew me out one more time. You've been out there quite often, it looks like. So, how bad is the road? Is it worse than any township road that I travel on?
I think that, without trying to put myself or anybody in a hard position, I think it's in a similar state or condition as a lot of private roads in the county, where individuals have... May not have a real road authority agreement put together to how to maintain the road. And it seems to be similar to those types of private roads.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for him? Kevin, do you know who really maintains that road then? The people that are there that's all private? Okay. Okay, anyone else in the audience care to speak to this item? You want to come back up, maybe, to address anything?
Yes, please.
Come forward. State your name and again, and your address, please.
Sure. My name's Tanner Hilger, 26680, Apple Lane. I think what you've heard from our neighbors is a exaggerated collection of unforgiveness from 20 years of things that we've done wrong, things that we've never done. And I don't know how to address that exactly, because from hearing what they're saying, I wouldn't want to live next to me, right? You deserve to hear the truth, and it's hard to give you that when you're hearing things. You have pictures with handwritten dates, opinions of the noise levels, et cetera. I can tell you that we've learned a lot along the way, and since our July hearing, we've gotten familiar with the ordinances. And as we were allowed to improve our property, we incorporated every one of those ordinances as we could. We haven't built with the doors open after 6:00 PM, with the exception of two nights. We were a couple minutes past 6:00, just lost track of time. The kids went 14 minutes past one time. They were just wanted... They were trying to get the job done. They neglected the doors. The other 50 times between now and July that we built, we complied 100% of the time. So, what you're hearing from the neighbors and what we're experiencing in our home are very different. And I don't know how to address that exactly and cause trouble and make peace in our neighborhood. So, I mean, just to give you an idea, Cheryl referred to a letter that went out to our neighbors that everybody agreed to on, and she stated, I believe, that I ignored it or laughed at it. I did ignore it because there was no truth to the letter at all. And I've found that if I push back at all, more troubles come our way, more complaints, et cetera. I don't know if this is the place to put the letter, if you want to see the letter. I don't know if this is the place to put the letter, if you want to see the letter. And I'm just gonna use a couple examples so you can understand what to interpret here. We take this information and we harvest all of the improvements we can from it and we do what we can to comply, make things better, even if it's not required of us. But there's things in this letter that just aren't even true. So the neighbors want to let us know that your family members, contractors, visitors, and anyone else driving down your house need to slow down. That may be, but I can tell you that our family, the speedometers in every one of our vehicles work. And mine varies from 14, 15 mile an hour to 22, 23 miles an hour. The residential speed limit in Sioux Falls in the county, I believe, is 25. So we're operating under the speed limit, yet we're being criticized for speeding recklessly on purpose, almost like we're using the speed bump as some sort of a ramp. We are not, we're just living. I've asked our other two neighbors about this letter. Cheryl stated that everybody on Apple Lane got together and they drafted this letter. The other two neighbors stated they don't, they've never seen this letter. One says, "I don't remember anything about a letter." The other, "I haven't seen this and had nothing to do with this letter." Two different stories. We asked the other neighbors, "Do the Hilgers drive too fast down Apple Lane?" Both said no. "Does anyone else drive too fast down Apple Lane?" One said no, the other said yes. At some point, everybody has probably driven too fast. And all I can't control, the contractors, et cetera, that's beyond my control, but me and my family are driving under the speed limit. "Are you concerned about having a car accident on Apple Lane?" Both other neighbors said no. "Are they concerned about their kids being ran over on Apple Lane?" They said no. "Are my kids always on Apple Lane?" The other two neighbors said no. "Do you feel the potholes on Apple Lane are caused by the Hilgers?" The topic of, "Do you feel any flat tires because the nails are flying out of our pallets?" One responded, "I haven't had any flat tires." The other? The comment was, "No, we're not responsible for the flat tires." Asked him, "What do you believe the source of getting flat tires is?" He says, "We live on the dump road." It seems that the frequency of the flat tires increases when there's a natural disaster or free dump days. The more trips to the dump, the more flat tires we get also. The idea that nails are flying out of what we make, I just, that doesn't make sense to me. And if someone could explain that to me, I'm open to hearing and understanding why that would be. But both other neighbors were willing to sign, these aren't just my questions, they signed saying, these were their answers. And it's different from what you're hearing from the other neighbors. I'd like to know what speed the neighbors think we are operating at. It seems to be important conversation. How would they know? They could measure that with video and space, they could figure the speed. That would prove how fast we're driving. Night building, the pictures of lumber on the driveway, we haven't done that since we learned that we shouldn't. So I don't know when the pictures were taken. It may be that our doors were open, but what we were doing may be different than what they believe we were doing. The only way I can control that, I believe, is I'm willing to secure my property with video. And if there's any concerns, we can pull it up and tell you what was going on at this date and time on about any point of our property, if that's what it takes. We're searching for the truth, we're searching for our freedom, we're searching for peace in our neighborhood. And a lot of the things we do is perceived as we're doing it to be inconsiderate and that's just not true. In fact, we're just doing things that are opposite of that. We're trying to get along, we're trying to make things better. In regards to maintaining the lane, we used to maintain the lane. Larry is correct. He uses, he's got a magic eye beam that he uses. It puts a straight edge on the road. I use a different style that moves material around. We worked together years ago on that road. It was in pretty good shape. Somewhere along the line, when our relationship failed with Cheryl and the Johnsons, we began being criticized for driving on their grass on the edge of the road. They put up several no trespassing signs, no keep off my grass signs. And at that point, I knew we couldn't maintain the road anymore, because the equipment that we use is just something you pull behind your four wheeler or your lawnmower. It's not that precise. And quite frankly, I would like, Apple Lane used to be wide enough for two vehicles to meet, you'd barely have to put a tire in the grass. The grass has grown over Apple Lane now. So it's one car road. And I'd like to move that back so we could get the gravel back on the road and make a crown. I'm open for doing that, but I can't do that, especially now with a speed bump there. I can't maneuver around that or over it. We used to buy all the materials for Apple Lane. I've got receipts and stuff, if you want to see it. It's proof, not just my opinion. And we organized the whole thing. We decided what, how much material to order, where we were gonna put it. We organized the schedule, bringing the trucks in, moving the materials around. We told the neighbors what we were up to, we got their consent, we went forward with the project and they paid their share of the bill. So we didn't have to carry the bill for very long. But we did, we carried it right up front, trusting that they would pay it back. Trash in the yard? We've had construction in our home for a year or two now and there has been trash. This spring, we lost some trash. Our construction guys were doing a good job, but it was so windy, we did lose some trash. I don't dare cross the property line to fetch it. There have been construction projects at both their homes over the years and each time, there's a limited amount of trash that blows around. We pick it up, we don't say a word, it's part of the project, we'd rather keep peace with our neighbors. I do have a question that's specific to the approval. There's a reference to the garage doors being open or closed, and I believe in one spot, and Susan, you might help me with this. On two different places, it says, so first one, on page two, it says, "Staff recommends a condition that requires the garage door to be down during evening hours, 6:00 PM and 8:00 AM." Then on page four, item two, it says, "All pallet and crate construction must take place within the enclosed garage with the doors shut." That could be some of the confusion that we're having with our neighbors. To me, that collides, so we would love some clarification on that so we can work within those rules. Another question I have is on page four, number three, "All materials shall be stored within the enclosed garage." We've done that. We just finished that project. That's the one we finished up on Thursday. So yes, there's lots of materials that were outside, that you saw in the pictures. It was there because we were still working on our project, which we had met the deadline, we still had time to do that. Out of courtesy, though, we moved the materials behind our home so nobody would have to look at it. We weren't trying to hide it. We were being courteous. And while I'm thinking about it, all the cars on the driveway, the intent's not to block the sound or the view. We were working on the cars, getting them fixed up so we could license them and drive them. It's hard to work on cars when they're out in your yard. We drive them around, we pull them up to the garage, we work on them. We have most of that on video. But back to the number, where was it, number three? Number three on page four, "One trailer may be used outside to temporarily store, stack, and transport finished pallets and crates." We were under the understanding that we could use more than one trailer, excuse me, as long as it was licensed. Because as you heard in my address at the beginning, we're often loading one trailer and I show up with materials, so instantly we're out of compliance because we got two trailers with stuff on them outside. So there's some overlap there. Not because we're being defiant, but we're just running the business and we're being efficient about it. When we do fill a trailer, like on weekends, we can sometimes fill two trailers. We do it following in the rules. Our sound is correct, we're below the 60 decimals. Our location, our materials are now inside, we're going right from the building stage right to a trailer, then we move it around back so they don't have to see it. I didn't even think we had to do that, we were just being courteous. And if you've heard something that you have questions about, I'm willing to answer any question that you have.
Is there any questions for him? Madam Chair. Becky?
So, for the garage doors, or is the garage insulated?
It is not now, but it will be eventually, I'm afraid, after it gets cold.
Okay. Because, oops, I forgot. My question was whether or not the garage was insulated. And then my next question is, and maybe that's a question back for Kevin, so I'll just hold on that. And then rodent control, what do you currently do for rodent control? Someone else mentioned that. Do you put out, you know, appropriate rat baits and those types of things?
Yes, thank you. We do, but not because we have a rodent problem. We do that to avoid a rodent problem. Fact is, we've never had a rodent problem. There was a story that Cheryl told in our July meeting about some 17 mousetraps going off at night. That's no way to live, she said. I don't even understand that. I'd love to, because that sounds like a problem I'd like to correct. But when we do have a mouse, because we live in the country, we think we should have a mouse now and then, we do have a mouse, we have a struggle finding a mousetrap to address the problem. And our home was in disarray to an extent. And the construction project, since the construction project, we haven't had a mouse or any signs of one. We probably will though, because we, it's a house and there's mice, they find their way, it seems. Leave a door open or whatever, I don't know, but that's just not a, I don't understand that statement.
Anyone else have any questions for him?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, can you address any of this, please?
All right. So I will address, so condition number two is written, does state that the garage doors must be shut. He is right, the staff report was written stating that shut in the evening hours, but the condition does not have any such distinction of hours of the day. So the way that I would read this is the garage doors would need to be shut. If that's something that you would like to change, you can change that as here as part of the conditions of approval. In number three, I would note that if one trailer is not enough, you can change it to two trailers to cycle materials in and out as needed. The ordinance requires that there's no outside storage of materials. The reason why we decided that a trailer would be allowed is if it's on the licensed trailer, it's part of the transport process, it's gonna be there as a temporary in-out sort of thing. It's not being stored outside, it's just being shipped. So if you wanted two trailers, we can change that condition.
Becky?
So, since the garage is not insulated, even, even though the decibels are less than 60, how much muffling of sound do you think there would be as the result of the garage being insulated?
That's a hard question to say. I would say that 60 decibels, my understanding, is a little bit louder than a conversation. So if you're speaking to one person face to face, 60 decibels would be about that range of noise that you would hear. So 60 decibels is quite audible from a standing perspective.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ray?
Can I address the sound?
You can step forward, sir.
Thank you, Tanner Hilger, 266-80 Apple Lane. We, we have measured the sound level with the doors open and we've done a lot of experimenting, wind direction, humidity, et cetera. And we operate under 60 decibels at our property line with the doors open. And we found that actually with the door, with three doors open, the sound must dissipate better. With one door open, it's actually louder than with three doors open. So we've played around with this, we've become very familiar with what works, what doesn't work. But just out of courtesy, though, we often operate during the day between the 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM with our doors closed, just to keep peace in our neighborhood. I just wanted you to know.
Do any of you think that any of the conditions should be changed?
On number three there, I'd like to strike the one, two for two trailers.
Your mic. Turn your mic. Madam Chair.
On number three, I would like to strike the word one and insert the word two for two trailers. A second now.
Okay. I, well, I think we need to go back to see, well, let's do this first, yeah. We will change the condition on number three from one trailer to two. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioners?
Well, clearly, this neighborhood has issues and we're not gonna be able to solve them. I don't know that Solomon could solve them, but I would say that, you know, when I see an anonymous letter, I don't care much for it. I get a lot of them from people who say their son is in the county jail and not getting his medication, but they don't sign their name. I'm sorry. I remember I did get a letter, though, that said there was an embezzlement going on at the fairgrounds, unsigned, and I wished I'd delved a little tougher into that. But anonymous letters, we can't have them. Put your name on it or forget it. That's my attitude. And, you know, I do a lot of stupid stuff, so, you know, I like to put my name on it so that, you know, when I do that, I get called on it and we figure it out. But this neighborhood is just not working very well and I don't see an easy solution. I do think that there's a lot of surreptitious finger pointing. You know, I don't know if we could bring in a... You know, I don't know if, if we could bring in a prophet or a psychiatrist or somebody that would bring the group together, but we have to let go of our anger. We have to let go of it, or it's going to get worse. I, I don't see that, this driveway looks any worse than most driveways I've seen. My neighbors are using shop vacs and blowers on their leaves, lawn mowers into the evening. Saturday night, there was a party. I wish they'd invited me, but they were screaming all until 11 o'clock. And anyway, so stuff happens, and when people are around, people cause trouble. As Jean-Paul Sartre, the French philosopher, said, "Hell is others." If there were no other people, boy, we wouldn't have any problems. But we do have other people, and we do need to live and let live. And I appreciate Doug's suggestion here. I don't think we can solve this problem. Sign the damn letter if you have a complaint. Call the cops. Bring it to us directly. And the same thing with you guys, film it. And, and don't be so persnickety that, you know, if, if a vehicle crushes one of your dandelions that it's a major event. I'm going to support giving them an extension of operating as they are, but at the same time, that doesn't give you carte blanche to go ahead and, and tear up the neighborhood. And heaven forbid things get any worse because it's not going to be pleasant. So that's my motion.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
The philosopher part or the psychiatrist?
Anything that you say, Jeff, I'll second tonight.
Your motion is made, made to approve the conditional use permit.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
With, with her amendment that Doug brought.
That's correct, with the correction on number three, okay? I have a motion in second to approve the conditional use permit 22-59. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Any old business?
Just, so last Tuesday, we had a, we had two appeals, and I guess I failed to indicate last meeting, we had, the wall-like Airbnbs were appealed. The applicant appealed one, the neighbors appealed the other. So one was the Airbnb at the, in the established larger house, they upheld your decision last week. The other item was sort of a tie, so that it, it went nowhere and they ended up continuing it till tomorrow. So that would be the manufactured home that they were going to move in and then operate the Airbnb out of that, that's going to be heard tomorrow. So that will be lively discussion. The other item under, that's under old business, under new business, as a result of the heated discussions or the lengthy discussions we had last Tuesday about vacation home rentals, Airbnb, what's all occurring, how we, how we classify them basically as bed and breakfast, the county commission didn't like that approach, so they have asked that in a, an ordinance or that the zoning ordinance be amended to specifically address vacation home rentals. And so I have been working on an ordinance. I'll have a draft ordinance for us to look at in November. We can discuss it. It'll go out in the pack and give you time to read it. And then if you're satisfied with that, we would publish a hearing notice for a text amendment in January or February, whatever you, you would like. But we don't have to reinvent the wheel. I mean, we can look at what they do out West River because that's a much, I mean, there's lots of vacation home rentals out in the Black Hills, and, and so I've been exploring how other jurisdictions are dealing with Airbnbs, Vbros, vacation home rentals, whatever you want to call them. So the state also has some laws about time periods that you can rent a house before it's considered a vacation home rental and so on. So I'll have that ready for you next meeting. That's all I have.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.